Call to order, the Kaiser Planning Commission for August 14th. We had a little gavel. It's official. And I want to say to everyone, this is a great turnout. This is my first time facilitating this. So if I'm looking to help of my fellow staff and commissioners, that's why. And I just appreciate your grace ahead of time regarding that. So we're going to get started. So approval of the minutes from July 2019.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Great. Minutes are approved. Oops, got a vote on it. Oh, vote. Thank you. Vote.
All those in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Great. Thank you. Do I have to gobble?
Nope.
Great.
I won't need that the rest of that.
Okay. Appearance of interested citizens. Does anybody wish to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on to the public hearing. We are going to go down the list of those that signed up on these two papers. You get five minutes. If you are called and you have changed your mind or you don't list to speak, just let me know and we'll move on. Oh, public hearing is now open? No gavel. Thank you. I appreciate this. Okay. First person is Peter DeBeck.
You want staff first?
Staff first.
That's to do with the staff report first.
Okay. Thank you. Staff report.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for everybody that showed up. So tonight for our public hearing, we are talking about the Kaiser Revitalization Plan. With me is Lee Alli-Good and Matt Hasty, who are part of the consultant team, actually are the main people of the consultant team that helped us with this plan over the last, it's been a year and a half almost. I think it's been almost a year and a half it's been being worked on. There's been various meetings throughout. So tonight's public hearing, what we're asking to do is look at the plan as a whole, asking to forward a recommendation to council if the plan looks good as far as adopting the plan itself. And then in addition to the adoption of the revitalization plan, there are zone changes proposed for commercial properties along River Road to go to mixed use when instead of the like three different commercial zones we currently have, be the one zone. There's text amendment proposed to create the River Cherry Overlay District Zone, which will live in the Kaiser Development Code, as well as some additional text amendments to kind of align other sections to reference that new overlaying. And basically, so tonight it'll be a little bit different than normal and I want to thank you, planning commissioners. You officially, I believe, got the largest packet ever at a planning commission meeting this last couple of weeks, if you've been going through it. But so what we're, yeah, what we're going to do is we're going to have Matt and Lee give a presentation, gives a little overview of the project, talks us some of the nuances, and then also some of the details. We felt like it would be appropriate to do that upfront because we know that there may be many questions in the audience and hopefully the presentation can help kind of frame that up so that if people have other things they'd like to say in their public testimony time, it maybe would make sense. So anyway, so thank you so much for your work on this. And with that, I will turn it over to Lee and Matt and they're going to move over and kind of give us a little walkthrough of the project.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm excited to finally be in front of you with this proposal and I'm not sure what the computer wants to do. But I'm Lee Alli-Good. I'm a planner with OTAC.
And Matt Hasty, planner, project manager with Angelo Planning Group.
And so we're going to give you a quick overview of the reason for the project, what's been happening up till now, and then we'll provide an overview of what the plan itself recommends, and then we'll be available to answer any clarifying questions you might have. So the purpose of the Kaiser Revitalization Plan project was to develop strategies, regulations, and design treatments for the River Road and Cherry Avenue corridors, to promote mixed use and transit-oriented development, encourage increased development densities, and encourage the development of facilities and services to support the use of alternative travel modes. And so everything you see that came out of this planning process is based on these original purpose statements.
So I'll talk a little bit about, just kind of again, overview of the project. So the project area is essentially along River Road and Cherry Avenue and covers, you know, the majority of the existing commercial areas along the roads, but it extends out to some degree into some of the areas that are also currently zoned for residential use. We'll talk about kind of what's being proposed in these different areas as we go through the presentation and kind of the relative impact or degree of change in those different areas. There's three key intersections or nodes in the area. And again, we'll talk about how the proposal differs in those areas versus the rest of the project area, but those are at Lock Haven, Jamala, and Cherry Avenue, River Road intersection. So we'll talk about those in more detail. A large sort of objective of this project was to look at past planning efforts for this area and for the city as a whole, and really try to synthesize and integrate those different planning efforts and really build on the Kaiser Compass Vision 2029 process as well. So it was really, there's a number of previous planning efforts that have been conducted out here. We wanted to make sure that what we were doing was consistent with the vision and the goals and objectives of the vision, and you see those reflected on this slide, and you'll see many of those same goals and objectives reflected in the specific goals, objectives, and policies proposed for the Kaiser Revitalization Plan. So I won't read all those. Again, one of the kind of previous planning efforts that we were building on and looking at was the River Road Renaissance Plan. It had identified five districts within this corridor. You see some of the same objectives there that we talked about as overall objectives of this current planning effort. So really kind of a lot of consistency with the River Road Renaissance project and other efforts. Again, supporting pedestrian-friendly design, allowing people, you know, kind of a variety of ways to reach destinations within this planning area, within the corridor, really improving livability and promoting kind of a sense of community and sense of place within this area. All of these, and some of the ways to do that, creating and encouraging development of public spaces where people can gather, meet, eat, shop, et cetera, promoting a mix of different housing types and densities in the area. So these are some of the goals from the River Road Renaissance project that you should see again reflected in the current effort. Some of the guiding principles for implementation from the previous effort, making sure that some major capital projects that would be needed to improve design of streets along the area would be spearheaded by the city, that there would be opportunities for public-private partnerships, so that there's private development contributions towards some of the improvements in the area. Again, focusing on those specific key intersections and activity centers, and doing things that would encourage businesses to invest in the area as well. And new mixed use for higher-density development was another guiding principle from that earlier planning process. You take over here?
I'll take it. Okay. So that's the background of the project, where we started and all of the elements and previous planning efforts that we were trying to synthesize into this one Kaiser Revitalization Plan. So as part of the project, there's been quite a bit of public engagement. We've had stakeholder meetings and interviews, and I see some familiar faces here tonight. There have been public meetings, advisory committee meetings, stakeholder committee meetings, and then you, this group has seen the staff and the team talking about the project at a briefing. So there's been a lot of discussion, I guess, over the past year and a half about this plan and where we ended up. The goals and the objectives of the plan that has been compiled and submitted to you for review are high-level, a thriving and diverse corridor, a thoughtful growth and redevelopment, and excellent transportation and public facilities. And so all of the projects and amendments and all of the other components of the plan that are being recommended have been evaluated against these goals and objectives to make sure that they're furthering those goals and objectives. The plan is broken down into a number of different sections. The first is an executive summary, which I think it's a two-page in the end, really high-level overview of the plan and what it recommends. There's a discussion of the background in the planning process, land use and urban design approaches, transportation, public investments, implementation strategies, and potential funding sources. And then a number of appendices that provide technical information to support the recommendations, and I think that those are what made up the bulk of the packet that you all received. So for those of you who weren't able to read the whole plan and the appendices, we're going to go over the high-level highlights. So the recommendations are broken down into land use and urban design, which is code and policy recommendations, which Matt will talk more about. Transportation, which is really focused on infrastructure recommendations. And then public investment, which is also needed to fund infrastructure recommendations and includes a number of different tools that the community can consider further. So Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So I'll walk through the code and policy recommendations. I'll try to give you sort of enough detail to give you the highlights, but not get too far into the weeds, but be happy to answer questions later on if you have them about any of the details. So there's a number of amendments being proposed, both to your development code as well as to your comprehensive plan. And the primary changes to the development code are, as Shane mentioned, rezoning commercial properties along the corridor to a mixed-use designation. I'm going to actually take a really quick step back here and say, in addition to the objectives that we talked about a moment ago for the planning process, I would sort of characterize three objectives associated with the code amendments, increasing flexibility, increasing efficiency, and providing opportunities for a broader mix of uses within the corridor. I would sort of think about those as some primary code objectives here. So rezoning to mixed use provides additional opportunities and more consistency in terms of what's allowed within the corridor and more flexibility. And then there is proposed this River Cherry Overlay District. It includes those mixed-use properties as well as some additional areas that are currently zoned for residential. And again, I'll kind of talk about what the changes are in those areas as well. So what's being proposed in terms of changing the code is a new overlay district that identifies how development and design standards differ in these areas versus the base zones, the underlying base zones. There's three sub-districts or centers, Lock Haven, Jamala, and Cherry. There are some additional differences in terms of the standards that would be applied in those areas. So there are some standards that would be applied corridor-wide and in terms of use and development requirements, and then some standards that differ between the centers versus corridor-wide. And then, as Shane mentioned, some additional amendments to the code, just to make sure that we're being consistent with other elements of the code, with other chapters in your development code. In terms of the comprehensive plan amendments, and again, I'll go over all that in a little more detail in a moment. In terms of the comprehensive plan amendments, the Kaiser Revitalization Plan would become an element of the comp plan, and so there are policies within the document that would become comprehensive plan policies. It would be an amendment to the comp plan map designations to make sure the comp plan map is consistent with the zoning map, and then some minor text amendments to the comp plan to add references to this plan, as well as then retire the McNairy Activity Center Plan. This plan would essentially kind of supersede what was in that plan for this area. So getting into kind of a little bit more detail, again, one of the primary recommendations is rezoning those commercial areas to mixed use, and you see which areas would be affected on the map up there, as well as on, for the audience, the map on the board to the left or on the right side of the room. There's also a recommendation to explore rezoning for some existing medium-density residential areas in the future, but rezoning those areas is not part of the potential action for you all today. But it was a thing that we talked about during the course of the process. Ultimately, are proposing that the city look at that in more detail in the future and consider that down the road. And I kind of talked about some of these goals earlier. I kind of got ahead of myself a little bit. But again, simplifying things was a thing I should have mentioned in terms of application of different zones and also some of the standards within those zones. I talked about, you know, increasing consistency and flexibility and kind of expanding the potential development capacity and services in this area. In terms of where and how the standards in the overlay zone apply, just, they don't affect kind of existing business or development now. Nobody has to do anything differently just because the standards are changing or this overlay zone is being applied or the zoning is changing from commercial to mixed use. But they will apply to new construction or major renovation of existing properties. So, and major renovations defined as a 25% increase in assessed value. One of the other things that we're doing within this overlay zone is simplifying the categories associated with land use. So right now, your zoning code, as many do, has a fairly long and complicated list of specific land uses, and sometimes if you're coming in with an application for something, it can be hard to know, is my thing in here? Is it allowed or not allowed? And so one of the things we're doing is proposing these more general land use categories that are listed up there in the sub-bullets. There are examples of what they are, what types of specific uses would be within those categories for kind of illustration purposes, but it's really kind of a simplification of what can be allowed, just to make it frankly easier for somebody who comes in to know what they can or can't do within the area. There are some specific land uses that would be prohibited within the overlay zone. There's also some provisions that would allow for if somebody comes in with a development application that includes mixed properties within the mixed-use zone area, and they would, and they propose to have a consolidated development planner area that includes directly adjacent properties in the residential zone. They, it would allow them to also have those mixed uses, the same uses allowed on the residential properties that are directly adjacent to the mixed-use properties. So it kind of provides a little flexibility to expand that site with the idea being that this is a narrow corridor and some of the types of uses that would be allowed in the mixed-use zone and someone, a property owner, might want to pursue, might require some more space. So if they own or consolidate those properties, they would be able to also have some of the uses that are permitted in the mixed-use zone in addition to what's permitted in the residential zone. There are a number of proposed standards that would be applied corridor-wide, and a lot of these are fairly modest changes. Again, the objective is to allow for some additional flexibility in terms of what you can do in the zone and for, to some degree, some increase in intensity to promote that kind of urban density and pedestrian-oriented environment. So some modest changes, and you'll see some examples of these in a future slide, in the required percentage of the site devoted to landscaping, but at the same time, some proposed changes that improve or increase the required quality of landscaping that occurs. So reduce the amount of coverage but increase the quality of the landscaping within the corridor. Some, I would call them modest, proposed changes to residential densities and lot size in the, all of the zones within the overlay area. So we're looking at changes in terms of increased, allowed increased densities of about 20% in the different zones, if you kind of look at where the densities are proposed to go, and similar changes in terms of the allowed minimum lot size for specific types of residential development. A little bit more of a change in terms of the reduction in lot sizes for duplexes, and I would say, having looked at this and thought about it in the context of the recent legislation, House Bill 2001, this change, I think, will actually get you in compliance with House Bill 2001 for this area anyway. So it's pretty consistent with that. It would also increase the number of accessory units allowed on an individual lot. It would bump that up to a second accessory unit allowed. So I would say, you know, I would generally characterize, and then some reductions in off-street parking requirements for not all, but some residential and commercial uses. We looked at kind of what other communities of this size are doing. There's a model development code for small and medium-sized communities in Oregon. We compared your requirements with those requirements and recommended, I would say, some targeted or focused changes in terms of requirements for off-street parking in this, in the overlay zone. And I would say in terms of just sort of the general effects in the mixed-use zones versus the residential zones, particularly in the residential zones, we're not talking about really an expansion of the types of allowed uses, other than that provision that allows for the consolidation of lots directly adjacent and mixed-use development in those. But otherwise, what we're looking at are essentially allowing a little bit more to happen in terms of the residential uses on those properties, in terms of the lot size, the relative density, and the types of uses in terms of duplexes and accessory dwelling units primarily. So that's how I'd kind of characterize those changes. I know there have been questions from folks in those residential areas about how are they impacted? That's kind of how I think about it. There are also some new provisions proposed in terms of access standards for properties essentially along River Road and Cherry, along arterials. One of the kind of issues with trying to create a place that's easier for people to walk and safer for people to walk is just reducing the number of curb cuts that you have coming off of those roads. And so this isn't going to kind of force anybody to go out there and close an access point, but if they are proposing to do specific things on their site in terms of change of use on the site or expansion of the use or expansion or, I think, change in the parking area out there, the city, there would be sort of four situations where accesses would be required to be either shifted or consolidated. So if there's an existing access on kind of a lower category street, this is the diagram on the far left, and also an existing access on the arterial, River or Cherry, they would need to close the access on the arterial, on River or Cherry, and use the access on the, the access they already have on the secondary street. Same thing if there's the ability or opportunity for an access off of the secondary street and an existing access on the arterial, they would need to use that access point that is, that they could create on the secondary street. That's the second diagram from the left. Third diagram is if there are multiple access points off of River Road or Cherry, and one of those access points does not meet the city's access standards, it's too close to the intersection, they would need to close that access and then, but if all the access points meet the city's access standards, and that's the diagram on the far right, no action necessary. And again, these would be triggered by some kind of proposed development action. They would not just be applied outside of somebody coming in and proposing to do something. So I wanted to talk about those in a little more detail because it's so, just, it's not totally apparent from just looking at the diagrams. This is just a summary, and I am getting relatively close to the end of my part of the presentation, so bear with me. Just a summary of some of the proposed changes and some of the development standards. In terms of auto-oriented uses, things like drive-throughs or certain types of uses that are essentially auto-repair, things like that. Currently, those are prohibited at the River Road-Jamala intersection. There's no proposed change in that corridor-wide, but in the centers, those types of uses would be limited through a conditional use process and/or subject to some specific development standards to mitigate their impacts on essentially the streetscape or the surrounding areas, some additional setbacks, screening and buffering requirements. I talked earlier, well, I didn't, I talked about landscaping, but maximum lot coverage, there's some modest proposed changes to those, again, just to allow for more of the site to be developed. And you can see kind of the existing code versus corridor-wide and centers standards there, some increases of 5% to 10% in terms of allowed maximum lot coverage. And then also some changes to the front setback. No changes corridor-wide, but some proposed changes in the centers. How much change depends in part on how much right-of-way is there already and whether or not the existing use is close to that right-of-way. We want to make sure that there continues to be enough room to create the street design that Lee's going to talk about in a moment, as well as have landscaping on these sites. So that's kind of a variable based on those objectives. And then some additional requirements in centers. For the Lock Haven Center, there's some proposed master planning provisions, so it would require a master plan for future development over a certain size in that area. And the idea here is to create really some, to require or end up with some mixed-use centers. So any future development would need to have some kind of residential component to it. So there are some standards associated with that. And some ability for the city to apply some conditions of approval to future developments in that area to meet certain objectives that are laid out in a fair bit of detail in the proposed development code amendments. There are some additional potential reductions in off-street parking allowed in the centers, but they would need to be in exchange for or along with some other things, such as providing or having a certain level of transit service, having some shared parking in those areas. There's kind of a long list, I won't go into it. So allowing for some reduction in parking requirements, but along with some things that kind of mitigate or help address parking demand or need in those areas. And then finally, in those centers, there are a number of proposed building design standards, really just to kind of up the quality of architectural and urban design in those areas. So again, these would apply to future development, not to existing uses, but some standards related to what building entries look like and how they connect to the sidewalk, weather protection in terms of awnings, things like that, where parking's located, having it on the side or behind buildings, so to access a building, you don't have to walk from the sidewalk across a parking lot. Allowing for and encouraging creation of courtyards, plazas, other open space for pedestrians, requiring a certain amount of window coverage, I think, on, more on the ground floor, but a certain amount on the upper floors of buildings in the areas. And some kind of variation and detailing in what the face or facade of a building looks like, as well as what building materials are used, and then screening things like rooftop equipment or electrical equipment, anything like that, so it just has less of a visual impact on, on the area. And that was it. Thanks for your patience. I know that was kind of detailed, but I figured it'd be good to give you a reasonably good look at all that stuff. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. And so, much like the plan itself, the presentation starts with a lot of detail and then it becomes a little less detailed, and part of that is because the plan and code amendments that Matt is talking about apply to individual private properties, and so they affect more people, whereas the transportation and the public improvement recommendations that I'm going to go over really apply with some very small exceptions to public right-of-way and public property. So these are really more kind of policy direction recommendations, investment recommendations than any- than anything that would apply immediately to properties. So, this just indicates the plan goals and objectives, and which goals and objectives these recommendations are intended to meet. And so, those recommendations, and these are detailed much more in the plan itself and in the appendices, so I'm going to stay pretty high-level here. But the first is construct a modified River Road streetscape, and I'll talk a little bit about that more in a moment. Improve the Wheatland Road intersection, which is already part of the transportation system plan, but was kind of increased in priority through this process. Realigning the Mancunita and McNary intersection. Creating a parallel north-south bike network, or actually, more than one network, to parallel River Road and provide a lower stress route for people who aren't as comfortable cycling. Developing a sidewalk upgrade and infill program to connect sidewalks where there are gaps in existing sidewalk networks. And to perform a road safety and mobility audit. And that is really just going out and looking at what's there now and identifying opportunities for improvement. So, probably the biggest focus of discussion during this process was what, how to address River Road and increasing its bicycle facilities within the existing right-of-way, because we don't want to have to impact properties along River Road in order to provide these facilities. So, this is the existing cross-section, there's 72 feet of right-of-way, there are travel lanes, there's a sidewalk. And so, we were looking for ways to accommodate bicyclists without having to expand this area. And so, after quite a bit of discussion and quite a bit of analysis, the preferred option was this multi-use pack, which could go on either side of the street, though it's shown here on, I guess we'll call it the right side. And this would be within the existing right-of-way allowance. So, this is something that would be incorporated into your transportation system plan. And so, as River Road redevelops, or as improvements occur, this would provide direction for what those might look like. The other pretty key item for bicyclists was to create parallel routes to River Road. And you can see, the green on the right would be what you could call neighborhood greenways, you could call them something else, but typically, they have traffic calming elements, they have low speeds, and they have facilities where bicyclists share the road with vehicles, but at a lower speed. And so, on the left, you can see what's called a share-o, which indicates that it's a shared facility. Oh, so, those were the two primary recommendations on the transportation side. And the next section of the plan is potential public investments. And so, as I mentioned, these are also going to be applied to the goals and objectives of the plan, and some of those are about supporting existing businesses, creating a distinctive identity for the area, making sure that the facilities that exist are well-maintained and that it's attractive. And these are all things that can be participated in by private properties, but for the most part, really fall to a city or a jurisdiction to maintain. And so, the public investments are going to include all the transportation recommendations that the plan lays out. There are also a couple of others that came out of conversation, and I see here that there's one error, but these are more about economic development activities. So, a Main Street program is an option, something to explore through the Oregon Main Street program. An economic development program is what that next one should say, just putting together a program of economic development activities to encourage business development, things of that nature. There's quite a bit of discussion about the desire for public parking lots to lessen the obligation of individual businesses or property owners to provide parking, to provide more opportunity for shared facilities, to enhance Claygate Creeks, to make it more of an amenity to the community than it is now, and to create a public plaza that is a gathering space for the community. And the focus of that discussion was mostly, I guess, Christmas Tree Plaza. So, these are more high-level recommendations than some of the others, because, as you know, public investments require public money. And so, part of the conversation that'll happen after this plan is adopted is how the city wants to provide those tools. So, what this plan presents is a toolbox of options, something to start conversation, something to start, I guess, the creative juices flowing, but this plan itself doesn't adopt any of these actions or any of these programs. That would need to be a subsequent discussion and a subsequent plan. And so, this is kind of an example of what funding sources might be available or useful to fund some of the recommended public investments. And some of the options, you know, urban renewal comes up frequently because it's very powerful, local improvement districts or business improvement districts, there's discussion of a parking management fund, planning ahead for investments by putting funds aside, frontage improvements that come with development, so this is actually something that only requires regulation to adopt by the city, which then would be borne by private development. Grants, of course, are available for some of these options, and staff time, you know, it's a commitment of the community to dedicate staff time to these programs as well. So, we also counted that as a funding source and as a valuable component of the program. So, the next steps for the plan itself, as Shane mentioned, this group will make a recommendation to adopt the plan as-is, or modify it as you see fit. And then, the next step would be to implement the policy and code revisions, and then continue some further discussions about some of these components, specifically, public investment strategies and funding sources, and also, some of the zoning code amendments that were put aside for future discussion outside of this process. There we go. So, that concludes the presentation, but Matt and I are happy to answer any clarifying questions you may have.
Michael?
So, in the first half, you talked about how this was building off the River Road Renaissance. So, can you briefly explain the failures that didn't allow that to really develop in a way that, because they had goals that were very similar to here, but here we are 20 years later, trying to use those goals?
Yeah, I think it was around 2001. Michael, I'll jump on that, since they weren't here, they don't really know. But what I would say, and I want to be careful to oversimplify how I answer this for you, but the one thing that's a kind of a key difference is, so the River Road Renaissance Plan, it went through a similar, well, it was a different process, but the things that came out of that plan, ultimately, it got recognized and adopted by council, but we did not implement additional code changes that forced any of, so like, this plan includes actual design requirements and changes. So, the Renaissance Plan, when it was adopted, was much more a, hey, here's a good idea and a guiding document, but there really was no regulatory element that got adopted with it. We created, or council created, a committee, which was the River Road Renaissance Advisory Committee, and they earmarked a certain amount of urban renewal dollars back when we still had urban renewal, and they created a prioritized list of public improvements that they wanted to do. And so, that's where some of the street frontage improvements that have been done on River Road, where we have recessed sidewalks, where we have some plazas and open spaces, those were through, it was a voluntary grant project. So, when a business was coming in either to build a new building or do a remodel, we as staff would encourage them, hey, you should work with us, the city, and apply for this landscaping grant, and we will pay for part of the improvements, you pay for part of the improvements. And so, then we got some oversight through that River Road Renaissance Advisory Committee on what those designs turned out to be. Rolled forward a few years, urban renewal funds went away, and then that program just kind of ceased to exist, and there was no real regulatory structure underneath it that would say, as a business owner, you have to adhere to this new design standard, or anything like that. So, that's kind of the difference in my simple mind's view.
So, long story short is, even if the city can't be a partner in like a grant program, there's still the obligation under redevelopment on a lot that they have to abide by these.
Yeah, I would say that's accurate. I think Matt alluded to it well. With the specific development code amendments that are found in that Appendix 5, which is actually, once, when the development code gets changed, when somebody comes in, I apply the development code, or our department applies that development code. Comp plan policies are more general, broad-brush goals and policies. So, I think Matt said it well, we're, I think that a lot of the changes we're proposing, they are modest changes, you know, you're talking a 5% and a 10% change to landscaping, you know, reductions and parking shifts, but the idea is, is that hopefully, that moves the needle a little. The other thing we didn't talk about in the presentation, it was kind of baseline material that I would just kind of give you guys, and I think we talked about it some months ago, but another part of the project for kind of creating the base, was there was kind of a, I'll say, a market analysis kind of done of the overall area, and they kind of looked at River Road and what properties are valued at, what kind of return on investment people get currently. And it was kind of determined that, for the most part, River Road is doing okay, and we might be a little premature to see a ton of redevelopment in the next few years, but, well, I was kind of explaining it to my family this last week, because I said, yeah, Dad's not going to be home, I got a late meeting. And I said, you know, it's sort of like, and it sets the stage for the opportunity for something to change in the future, because my kids generally like to ask more like, well, Dad, what's the new restaurant coming into town, or what's the new thing? And I said, well, yes, this is a big project, we probably won't see a result immediately, but hopefully, it will set the ability for changes to happen down the road, so.
Thank you. Mike, where's your mic? Your microphone?
This is mine.
Because I don't, because he can't hear you. There. Okay, okay, sorry.
Sorry, I guess I wasn't close enough, sorry.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Staff?
No, I think just, thank you, Lee and Matt, we appreciate the good work that you've done, and thank you for the presentation. And yeah, if they can join me back and we can open it up.
Thank you both. It was very good. Ready to, are we ready to open the public hearing? Are we ready? So, first person on the sheet is Peter DeBeck. Peter, are you interested? Hello, Peter.
I think some of the questions have been answered by, you know, this thing, one of my concerns is I live off of Holly Hop, and getting out there, you know, during certain hours is really sort of terrible. And I think that there, I want to know for sure that they have something that, if they decide to change something, not like they have to do it, that they need to get a better setback for parking and stuff, so your visibility gets better. Because my first move in there, we almost ran over somebody just trying to get out on River Road, and the only thing they did, they talked to the people, and they did put the little concrete bunkers to stop them there, you know, for parking, although some people with monster trucks back in there, then they go out onto the sidewalks, they can't see. And that is one of the major problems I see along River Road, is some of the stuff that has been done, I mean, I can see that they can change it, so you're going to have to make these things setback for parking things. But the other thing that I find not as useful is some of the beautification to River Road, some of that is just as bad as some of the, you know, old parking things is, because not everybody drives a monster truck, that you can be so up high to get a better view getting out to River Road. Most people have cars that are lower to the ground than we probably grew up with, especially for me, because I'm pretty old. And being older, it's hard to get out on a River Road, and I don't like to take any chances, but that is a concern to me, because the beautification, some places, it blocks your view. So, beautification, it's looking like they're more interested in form rather than total function. And some of the other things I would think that they need to change is to look at also this signage on there, to go to some change in it, because it actually has turned over the years with all the growth in here. River Road is not, it looks like one strip mall from one end to the other. It's not, you know, that pleasing, and then, the Kaiser is actually almost the, you know, home of fast food, you know, or something, there's so many chains along there and things like that. So, it really doesn't do anything when you do those type of business in there. And as you get older, you need better egress, you know, to get out onto a River Road. So, even if I go down to Glenbrook, I can't see because of the, you know, they're coming, if I wanted to make a turn before the light, you know, and to go out to make a right, you can't see that well, because the hedges are high enough, and I think the setbacks need better, that you have a clear view. And that's my major concern. And the only other one is, where I live, it butts the place where the change is, and what would be any change to that, if your property butts to it, could it happen? Would they do eminent domain if they wanted to build something bigger or something like that, if this is allowed?
Well, I, I mean, generally eminent domain is only like for public purposes, so a private developer couldn't exercise that, they'd have to pay you for your property, but...
But would the city approve something like that, if they wanted to do something like that, or is that...
So, with the, okay, so with the proposed change, Peter, that we have, and Matt kind of addressed it, essentially, what the code language says, and Matt, jump in and help me if I'm explaining this wrong, but, so, we essentially have a commercial-zoned area that's already defined, we're not changing that definition. But if a property owner of that commercial area also owned the directly adjacent residential zone, either our MRS-owned property right next to it, they could kind of spill over that commercial development onto that other property they owned, and have additional uses normally that would be only in that commercial area, also on that residentially-zoned property, but they would have to provide buffering mitigation between the adjacent residents.
Yeah, that's a lot of concern to people about, you know, if it's going to affect them in the long run. But yeah, I would hope that you take as, if anything, as due form rather, you know, function over form when you're planning, because some of the stuff just does not work. Like, building things so close to the street, if you ever had to expand the street, you'd let people build so close right by the sidewalk, you're either not going to be able to have sidewalk, and traffic keeps getting worse. And alternates are really good. I've seen how some people in the morning, because I go to the dog park, they'll go down Windsor Island Road to Shoreline to River Crest, and then they hit a light to get on there, and they avoid most of going through Kaiser through the traffic in the morning, because you don't know what some people are going to do. And at my age, I'm lucky I can get out on River Road some days. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any responses or Peter's feedback?
I'd like to ask, Shane, can you comment, or anyone on staff, the concerns that Peter brought up about visibility sightlines when exiting property, is that something that would be looked at in this traffic safety audit that was discussed as one of the options?
I think that it, I think clearly it could be. I mean, the focus of it originally was more about the mobility piece of it, but yeah, I think that could definitely be something that could be looked at. The city, we do, we currently have vision clearance standards that are there on the books, and I know Peter and I have talked before, and I don't disagree, that sometimes those standards don't work the greatest on River Road, that carries 35,000 trips every day, and a lot of people that are driving too fast. But, so those are, I think it would be a little bit of a, maybe a different conversation, or one for Traffic Safety Commission to take up and look at, but I do think those are valid concerns. But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add, is this guy working? Yeah. I would just add that the recommendations in terms of consolidating or reducing access points under certain circumstances would also help with that. If you have fewer access points on and off of River Road, it's helping with that issue. I would also say that kind of the change in location of parking in terms of being in front of a building versus on the side or rear, that's going to help with that to some degree, too, you're not going to have as much vehicular movement close to the sidewalk, so I think those would be things that are in the proposed amendments that would address that to some degree at least.
Michael?
And I would add that part of the plan that Lee was talking about was having some narrower lanes. I'd like to see a little I'd like to see a little narrower than that, but, um, it's designing the street to draw, to make people get the message that they should be driving slower, so that, rather than just putting up a sign and then having wide lanes, people don't follow the sign, they will follow the design of the road. So if you design the road to slow cars down, most people will slow down.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Next on the list is Jame Weiger.
Michael?
Michael, thank you.
I have a letter in the mail, and first thing is it says that it may change the value of my property.
James, you need to identify yourself for the record.
Okay, I'm James Weigel, E-I-G-E-L.
Hello.
I own property here in Kaiser, and I live in Salem.
Thanks for being here today.
Pardon me?
Thank you for being here today.
Yeah.
What would you like to talk to us about?
Well, it says that it may change the value of my property. And I've owned that property a long time, and it's probably changed the zoning on it, I'm, I guess, nine, 10 times since I've owned it. And originally, this is what it was, was commercial property, they changed it several times to different things. And so my question is, how's that going to affect the value of the property?
Uh, so, yeah, so the notice we sent, it's, it's called the Measure 56 Notice, and by state law, we have to send that out to everyone. I'm not a real estate professional, but I don't know if you remember me from forever ago, but, yeah. So on your property specifically, are you zoned CM right now? Or is it...
I believe I am, uh, commercial, light industrial.
Okay, so, yeah, so you're right, you're right next to Cade, right? Just north of it? Okay. So with, with the zoning change, basically everyone within the district that was in that River Cherry overlay district with, on the slide, I don't know if it's on one of the boards, but the whole area that was lit up blue, we sent a notice to everybody because that was the most conservative way to go, to make sure everybody was covered. I can, I can talk with you afterwards or when I'm in my office, and we could look at your specific property to make sure that your property is actually being changed in its zone, because depending on what its base zone is right now, it may not be changing your zone at all. But I don't, I don't have, I don't have that with me right now, but I can get that answer for you.
I guess the other thing I would add is that the Measure 56 Notice, the state legislature adopted specific language that has to be used, and it's that language, and it's terrifying.
Sure, no, it doesn't scare me, I just need to know.
I understand, yeah.
And then, uh, you guys said something to come up to code, Kaiser has to do something with House Bill 2001, what is that?
Oh, so, um, House Bill 2001 requires cities over a certain size, and I'm pretty sure it measures in the zone, in terms of the size, to, um, allow certain types of housing in certain zones. And one of the things they are required to do is to allow a duplex on any lot that currently allows for a single-family dwelling. And so we're not really changing, there's already duplexes allowed in these zones, what we're suggesting changing is the allowed lot size for duplexes, it would essentially, um, allow for a duplex on the same size lot as a single-family zone, and that's essentially part of what that legislation is requiring. And so in that sense, that one change in the zoning would help, um, the city address or be consistent with that legislation.
So that's all that legislation was?
It also requires cities to, um, allow some other types of housing that are referred to as middle housing, those are, um, triplexes or triplexes, fourplexes, and what are called cottage housing or cottage cluster housing, to allow those, um, in zones where single-family detached homes are allowed. It's a little less, um, it's a little more general in terms of cities have some flexibility about how they do that. They don't have to allow those types of houses or those types of housing on every lot where a single-family detached home is allowed. So that's something cities have a couple of years to comply with, and they have some flexibility, and it's going to take everybody, I think, some time to kind of figure out how best to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
So, but that's what that legislation does.
Then the 25% of South, uh, South, that's the value of the, uh, improvement that you're going to do to the property, or that's the 25% of the value of the property?
That would be, if someone is, um, improving the property...
Renovation.
And it results in a 25% increase in the value of the property, that would trigger, um, consistency with the proposed new development standards that are, that are included in the overlays.
So then you would have to grant the city of Kaiser properties for improvements?
No, it would be more like then, if you were, if you were improving your property, you'd have to be consistent with parking requirements, setback requirements, et cetera, with the, with the changes to those requirements.
Well, that's standard anyways, I, I'm saying, so let's just say, for instance, I decided I was going to go over and do an addition on that house and raise the value of it 70 grand. That's going to put me over the 25%. So that means that I'm going to have to put a curb in development like they did next door?
No, that's not what this is saying, it's more saying that, um, if the, the development code now says that you can have less land devoted to landscaping, but you have to increase the quality of the landscaping, you'd have to increase the quality of the landscaping. Or if it says on the ground floor, you'd have windows covering a certain percentage of the building, if you're in a specific portion of this corridor, and that doesn't apply everywhere, you'd have to meet that standard. So it's more you'd have to meet some of the development, to change the new development standards in the area, not that you'd have to necessarily dedicate land for something.
I'm going to lose my time. And then, uh, some specific uses are prohibited, can you explain to me what would be prohibited?
Yeah, it's, it's primarily, um, certain types of industrial uses, I believe, I'd have to kind of go back and look at the specific code amendments. I would say in general, what the proposal does is expand the types of uses that are allowed. The commercial, um, zone allows for certain commercial uses, it allows for people's residential uses, so the mixed-use zone allows for just a broader range of uses. And for the most part, that's what we're, we're talking about here. In the centers, um, there are some auto-oriented uses that would be either not allowed or subject to some limitations. And we can kind of look at that in more detail, or as I'm sitting here and...
I'm just curious, this isn't going to happen tomorrow. The, the proposal was for, um, was it 2029? For all this to be implemented?
No, the proposal is for this group to make a recommendation tonight, send that to council, council...
Vote on it next week.
But it's not going to apply unless somebody comes along and wants to do something with their property.
Okay, so, so with planning, it's usually a 10-year period out with the city, so what was the plan 10 years ago for them to vote on today?
So again, I'd sort of echo partly what Shane said, which was that when the River Renaissance Plan was adopted, it was adopted as this broad, fairly broad plan, but there weren't a set of development code regulations adopted along with that. That's kind of the difference here. In terms of when some of the other things that require public investment or public funds are going to happen, that's going to depend on the availability of the, of that money. That's the kind of stuff that tends to take longer. And the last thing I would say is, there's not an expectation that this area is going to change dramatically in short order. It's really going to depend on people who own property in the area wanting to do something different with their property. That's what's going to create the change. These development code amendments in particular are there to allow opportunities and kind of really expand the range of things people could do with their properties, but also apply some additional standards on what that future development looks like.
So we're still on the same page that we were 10 years ago, this just beefs it up for the, the funding? It, it's going to put either tax increases on the, on the people that it affects, or you're going to pay through regulation? Or, or like you said, a, a private citizen decides that they're going to do this and they're going to throw their money into it?
I, yeah, I, we're not proposing any kind of change in the city's tax structure here. And there are, you know, I think as a lot of folks know, limitations on the ability to increase the, um, what is it, the Measure 47 assessed value. We can only go up a certain amount unless somebody comes in again and builds something new, or does something to directly increase the value.
Right, that's where the funding would come in, there's regulations. So each one of these properties that's listed on the map, if there was anything to be done there, it's going to be a 25% of the assessed value of the...
No, that's just the threshold for at what point someone would need to be consistent with these regulations. It's not saying that the tax is going to increase by 25%. That's just the, that's not what we're saying.
Yeah, I mean, so, so if I go get a permit to do whatever I want to do, there's going to be a value on that job. So the city's going to require me to pay a 25% of that value?
No.
No, okay, so where is the 25%?
So let me put it this way, if you're, if you go and you do an addition on that house and it's less than 25%, then the new standards aren't even going to apply at all. Right? So the, that, that's when the, that's the threshold for the applicability of that set of standards. I think you should give me a call tomorrow when I'm in my office, and we can talk about your property specifically, because depending on what your zoning is, I think I can probably answer your question a little bit more specific for what your concerns are, and I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
But I do, I think that that's the, the element is ultimately if, if it stays as a house, which is already, I believe, probably considered a non-conforming use, because it's just a house, the changes that we're proposing, if that property's zoned commercial, and we're looking at saying it's mixed use, you can essentially do the same types of uses on it, but it may give you actually more flexibility to do more with that property than you could without the changes.
Right. Okay, and then, uh, the...
We are, we are at time.
I'm done? Okay.
But thank you so much, it was a very good conversation.
All right, appreciate it.
Give me a call.
Thank you. Um, any comments or questions from commissioners or staff?
I would, I would just, I'd just remind everybody that this is your time to make your comments, this is not the time to, for extensive questions for staff and stuff, that, that was at the public, uh, uh, roundtables we had and all those kinds of things, but this is your opportunity to come forward and to voice your concerns or voice your suggestions. But we're not going to be able to take 10, 15, 20 minutes for everybody to answer their questions, you certainly can talk with staff later, uh, you know, that kind of thing, but we're here to hear what you have to say about your concerns and suggestions.
All right. With that said, next person on the list is Teresa Thompson. Can I please introduce yourself into the microphone?
My name is Teresa Thompson, and I live in Kaiser, Oregon.
Hello.
Um, since I'm not able to ask any questions at this point, I can't say that I fully understand everything that's going on, since this is my first meeting. What I can tell you is that I would probably disagree with some of the things that I've heard said here, because I live on Main Avenue. Main Avenue is a dead-end street that enters on Tooe River Road. And we already have issues, major issues, that have not been taken care of, that even when we have called the city and, and the planning or whatever department it is, we're kind of laughed at. Oh, we didn't even take Main Avenue, we forgot about it. Well, thank you so much, this street that's been here for over 60 years. And I also have to disagree with parking on the side, because that's one of the main issues we have, is people parking that work someplace, parking on the side of the street, which only further exacerbates our, our problems of trying to get out onto River Road. My biggest concern is, um, you say that you want to have this for people who work more of the inner city, that can walk, ride a bike, this type of thing. Good luck, unless you're discriminating against people who work in Salem, or in Woodburn, or any place and drive a car. That's only adding more automobiles to a street that's already overburdened. It's like, gee, let me eat until I throw up. That's River Road. Put more cars on it until it busts. And it's a major issue for us, and as a matter of fact, I went over and looked at the little, um, printout over here that you have, and it looks like our street is within that area. I've talked to almost everybody on our street, some of them have been here tonight, we want you to take it off. We don't want any rezoning of any kind done, we just want to stay on our street and be able to get out onto River Road when we need to. Okay?
Thank you. Any questions or response from commissioners or staff?
I would just make one response for potential clarification. Um, when I talk about parking on the side, I, I wasn't referring to parking on the street, I was referring to locating parking lots associated with buildings next to the building, so that's parking off of the street on the site. And so we weren't, I wasn't talking about, um, on-street parking on the street, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the list is Ian Wilson.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Next on the list is Terry Nisbet.
No comments.
Thank you, Terry. Carolyn Holman?
No comments.
Thank you. Ronnie Ruckain, Ruckain?
Say.
Thank you. Colleen Bush?
I just thought it was signed up.
Oh, we're just making sure. Marjorie Bartel? Dol, Dol Bartel?
No.
Okay. Penny Ricketts?
I just didn't notice it.
Great, thank you. Rick, same, okay. And, um, we know the last person declined, so...
Oh, I saw her from the back.
Yeah, there was someone.
Yeah, if anyone knew.
Yes.
Is there any additional folks with any comments?
Debbie's going to get the list.
I'm going to get the list. Please, sir, please come up. Please introduce yourself into the microphone.
Frank Alsor, I live over, uh, East Kaiser. Um, I have a couple of questions, some, some fundamentals on the revitalization. This is our time to talk as citizens, and you're going to make recommendations to City Council? So our timeframe for input is now, not in September or October?
You'll have opportunity to talk before the City Council also. We've also had, like, like I mentioned earlier, we've had a number of public meetings for the last year.
Oh, yeah.
But if you, you know, if you didn't, you know, you didn't get to those, tonight's an opportunity, and when the City Council deals with this, you have an opportunity also.
I don't recall if I ever had input on the, on this specific comment. I've talked with Shane, and I've talked with Matt about this, in that, um, I'm a big urban forestry guy, and so what I don't see on the River Road south of Chumawa is I don't see a lot of urban trees. I see examples of trees that are in this setting, but I don't see specific trees like a, like, uh, one option is an 84-foot width of a road that has more trees. It gives you the impression that there are trees there, but it doesn't have a specific amount of trees, more specifically white oaks. Those are, those are better to, to bring in, to take out our carbon and our oxygen. They're, they're better at it than evergreens. It's a proven fact, so. That's what I have to, to suggest, is more, more trees along Kaiser, Kaiser Road.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, and staff can help. We have specific tree landscaping requirements, don't we? I mean, we have a list of like 85 trees that senior recommends, is that what we're getting at here?
Yeah, so currently in our design standards, um, for street sections along art heroes and collectors, as it stands now, generally have a planter strip and the requirement, yeah, I believe it's a tree every 40 feet that's required off of our approved species list, might be every 30 feet. Clearly, we don't have planter strips everywhere, so it is kind of been one of those things that as things redevelop... So it is kind of been one of those things that as things redevelop, those get put in. But we do have an existing standard that's in the code, but I don't, we don't have a, we don't have specificity that thou shall plant a certain species necessarily in our, in our right-of-way tree ordinance.
And then also just add that as part of the proposed landscaping standards for the overlay area, there are proposed standards for planting trees. If there is a landscape area that's a minimum of 10 feet, then trees would be required to be planted within that landscaping area every 30 feet. Or if the landscape area is above a certain size, five, if you've got 500 square feet of, for every 500 square feet of required landscaping area, there would also be trees required as well. So I think, like I talked earlier about reducing some of the standards in terms of the percent of the site you devote to landscaping, but increasing the quality of the landscaping. And so that's a proposed change to those landscaping standards is to require more variety of landscaping where you do have it and where it's large enough to accommodate trees, to have trees as part of the landscaping as well.
But you're right. The graphics we showed of River Road don't show street trees. And part of the way we're trying to respond to that is by having this requirement that they're planted on private property. So you have kind of the same effect of street trees, but you don't need more right-of-way, right-of-way to do it.
And also to the extent that the city can get, that landscaping is provided along River Road on essentially like the backside of the sidewalks and there's the ability to get an easement, that there be trees planted in those areas as well. And if the city were able to ultimately have a wider right-of-way, there would be room for trees within a kind of combined sidewalk and planting strip area. Yeah. So there's several kind of specific proposals to increase the number and percentage of trees in the area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Frank.
All right.
And last on the list is Mike Jaffiel.
Jaffe.
Jaffe, thank you.
Good evening. Mike Jaffiel. And I'm another resident of Kaiser. I work for the Middle United Valley Council of Governments. I'm a transportation planner. Actually, currently the transportation planning director there for the SCATS MPO. So I know Kaiser quite well. I'm often visitor and I've been a regional planner here for 25 years, so. I have looked at the plan, not, not everything in the plan, but I do have a few comments. And this is just my personal comments, not my agency's comments, so I'll make that clear. And my comments basically fall into the safety umbrella of topics. The first one is about the cross-section. So it wasn't clear to me reading the plan which was the recommended one. I don't know if I saw an earlier version of the plan, but I saw the, the three or four cross-sections and I couldn't tell at first reading which one is recommended. Here's option A, B, and C, but I don't know, it's not clear to me. But more importantly, that cross-section is talking about south of Chamawa. And I know north of Chamawa, you have on-street bike lanes. Whereas south of Chamawa, you're recommending a multi-use path on one side. And I think maybe an oversight of the plan was to look at the section north of Chamawa. Because even though it has bike lanes, we're still talking about a facility that is 30,000 cars a day, I think, or. It has on-street bike lanes, but it's a matter of comfort. It's still a high-volume facility. It's still a, I don't know what the speed limit there is, but I'm guessing it's probably about 35, which means people go 40. And it's not a comfortable place to bike. So while you're making accommodations for more comfortable biking south of Chamawa, and I applaud the plan for that, I think it overlooked that area and you may want to consider, you know, how do we continue that biking? You know, here, here you have this section in the middle of the city between Chamawa and at least Lockhaven, but maybe north of Lockhaven. How does the two ends of Kaiser bike along River Road? And that's the only way really to get north-south up to the area north of Lockhaven. So should you consider that similar cross-section continuing north, at least to Lockhaven, but who knows past that? So that's one thought I had. The second thing is there's no discussions, at least along the parts of the plan I read, about safe mid-block crossings. And this has come up quite a bit. And I know in Salem's thinking over the last three or four years, the city of Salem, where they had a pedestrian safety plan, they're starting a safer crossings program. And as residents of Kaiser, you probably drive all around Salem. You've probably seen all the fairly new mid-block crossings with the rapid flashing beacons. We're going to see a lot more. You may think there's only about five or six. There's probably a dozen today and there's probably, there's plans to put quite a bit more. We're looking at potentially approving five ourselves with our federal funds. And the city is actually going to set aside money for, for more of these. Because people recognize, people don't always, you know, want to cross as a signal. And I know in Kaiser, and I was trying to look at my phone here, between the Burger King, which I can't remember the street, Glenbrook or Hollyhoff or something, south past the, past the bowling alley and all the way to Shringalaw. I don't know the distance, but it's quite long. And I bet people are crossing there quite a bit. And it's a five-lane facility. Do you want people crossing there? Probably you want them crossing safely if they're going to cross. So if, the city might start looking at doing some mid-like crossings. Look at their, their partner to the south and see the kind of mid-like, mid-block crossings they're putting in. And think about how that could fit in with the plans for River Road and even, even Cherry. I don't know if there's one signal between, well, there is one signal, I think. But there's long stretches of Cherry that also don't have a safe place to cross. So those were my two major comments. Like I said, safety comments. Lastly, I was here earlier in the week when the transportation, the Bicycle and Safety Commission here, you have a long title, I don't know the full name of it. But there was, there was a presentation by an ODOT employee about the upcoming changes to the speed limits and that ODOT's going to propose. So speed limits between 25 and 55 are, are set now by various rules. They are developing new guidelines of how those speeds should be set. So places in, in areas that may be currently a 35 or 40, maybe it's more appropriate to have a speed limit of 25 or 30. Just to slow down the cars, just to give, you know, reduce, reduce the vehicle-to-vehicle collisions. And I'll finish with this sentence. And also, of course, reduce any pedestrian collisions if people do, are crossing mid-block. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, Mark?
What's the cost of one of those mid-block crossings?
That's a good question. I wish I had a really good answer. I, I think I've, I think I've seen the ones that came to us. Maybe I can provide the committee with a better answer than the one I may state tonight. But they can range from 20,000 to 50,000. It kind of depends on how much infrastructure you need to build. I, I think the equipment itself might be 25,000. I would rather, I'd rather get you a better answer than just try to quote something and be, and then someone says, that's what it costs. Because I'd like, I don't know the exact cost. And it may vary based on how many lanes you're crossing. Are you going to put in those flashing beacons? And then sometimes it's based on what kind of improvements do you have to do on the sidewalk? Do you have to build ADA ramps where you're doing it? So that could be, that could be the most expensive part of the, the whole project.
I want to follow up with that. You mentioned about River Road, particularly south there of the Burger King. There's, if I recall, there's 11 different intersections between there and the city limits. Because the streets don't line up. And everywhere the street is, is a crosswalk, unmarked, but it's a crosswalk. So there's like 11 of them. And so I don't see a need for a mid-block. I do see a need for a safety crossing there for sure, but there's so many, every 100 feet's a actual unmarked crosswalk. Most of us drivers don't realize that, but there is. But my, my point being this is that's 35 miles an hour. We have complaints now about how River Road doesn't move quick enough, doesn't get enough cars through it, it's too crowded. What's your experience with these cross, these cross-signal walks like that? And without being at a three-phase traffic signal and keeping traffic moving?
I can't give you an engineering answer because I don't have one of those. I think the thing is this is for safety. So they don't get called that often. They're putting in a brand-new one on South Commercial where the Jack in the Box is. As far as South Commercial, a little north of Kubler. And a young girl died there about two years ago. You might have read about in the paper. I don't know how often people cross the street there, but, but obviously the, the danger is with a five-lane section, if some, one driver stops, the next lane over doesn't stop. So it's not so much that it interrupts the flow of traffic. It will a little bit, but it's really saying, what's more important? An occasional stoppage of, and slowing of traffic or letting someone cross the street and not get hit? If they get hit, obviously then you're really slowing traffic, of course. Plus it could be fatal.
Oh, Mike, Michael.
Thank you, Mike, for coming. I, I agree with you about the north part of, of River Road. This summer, we were, my family and I were crossing at McNary, Manzanita, on bikes, waiting for the traffic light to turn. And we went, when it turned, in the crosswalk side. The other side's not crosswalk. And my son came within a few feet of getting either seriously injured or killed. And that's because the speed limit there is very high and the traffic moves very fast and the lanes are very wide. So I agree that this has to be a, a complete corridor philosophical change. And I, I have seen the mid-block crossings. I was up in Vancouver last summer, B.C., and they had, on a main corridor, they had regular street lights that were normally green for the main traffic. But when a side vehicle, a vehicle coming from the side street came or a pedestrian came, that would trigger the light to turn, to turn red. So they were allowing the, the flow of traffic mostly. It's just when there was the need. I know, I don't know how that would go cost-wise versus a mid-block raised intersection with flashing lights, but that's another idea.
I would check with your traffic engineers more about that.
Yeah.
Not too familiar with those.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff or commissioner? Is there any other interested persons in the audience that could come up?
I'd just like to make a comment. We do have a lot of people that come. You're here to listen, you're here to hear things. You're interested in what's being discussed. This is a really good time to take what you've heard in the last hour and a half, and maybe you didn't have a comment to begin with, but now is a pretty good time to bring it forward. So you've been sitting here, you're interested, you're listening. Please, please, please come and talk to us if there's something on your mind. Even if it's something that you think is maybe small or it's something that you have just had an aha moment since you signed up and decided you didn't want to, maybe now is the right time. I would just really, really, really encourage you to do that. This is probably the biggest house we've had for a planning commission meeting since I've been on the commission. And I would just really appreciate to hear as much from everybody that came to hear from about this tonight. So just my two cents.
Thank you, Matt. Come on up.
By Colleen coming up. I will just say, I will echo what Matt said, but when this comes to, oh my gosh, I just drew a blank. Sorry. City council. It is also your time for public testimony. So I would encourage all of you to come to council when this is on the agenda. It won't be Monday night on the 19th. It's usually, I'm not going to quote time, but sometimes what's ever recommended by the time it comes, there is some more work that staff has to do. So it will come on council. So please, you know, look at the council packet. It is your opportunity. But if there's a question too that you have for staff, I'm going to echo that we have an amazing staff here that they'll try and answer your questions the best they can. But this planning commission is very receptive to comments as well as anyone that sits on city council. So again, your comments or questions are very welcome. Colleen?
My name is Colleen Bush. I live in Kaiser and I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Kaiser Transit District. So I'm not speaking for the entity, but in the discussions I've been able to have as being part of the Citizens Advisory Committee, they've made great allowances for public transit and allowances for the walking and trying to accommodate everybody. And I think the work has been a great project, a year's worth of work and, and all of that. So, and allowing for transit to be more effective is, is a good result. So that's all.
Thank you. Final chance? Great. Do we, do we close the hearing?
Prior to closing the hearing, the commission may want to discuss where you want to go from here and whether or not you want to go ahead and make a recommendation tonight if everyone feels comfortable. And then questions for staff and then when we reach the point where you feel like you want to go ahead and make a recommendation tonight, then you close the hearing. If it looks like it's the will of the commission and you want more information, you can choose to continue the hearing. I usually suggest that if you're going to not decide tonight, that you go ahead and continue the hearing so that there's no question that people can testify the next week. So subdue us.
Thank you. Okay, open. Matt?
So I do have one question, specifically relates to the transportation portion. And we've got the 72-foot corridor on River Road with the proposal to change it to a multi-lane use on one side and then doing some changes on another side. Is that? And then there's the other option of the, sort of the, I think you call it the greenways on parallel streets for the bike-ped piece, right? Is it both? Is it either or? Maybe I was a little unclear on that. So it's both options at the same time?
It is that they're both options that meet different needs for different cyclists.
So I think my feedback to that is we just spent a lot of money repaving River Road and doing a whole bunch of ADA access along River Road. So I think the immediate need, in my opinion, would be to focus more on the parallel portion of it while looking into the future, 10, 15 years down the road, when River Road does need to be redone, about looking at that potential. But I think the immediate need is, is very present because River Road is a dangerous place to try to ride a bicycle down. And there is a, a need for that for, for some folks, which I think could be potentially accomplished via that greenway system. And sort of looking at that as a, a more immediate implementation because otherwise we spent a lot of money on repaving River Road just to go back and spend a lot more money redoing River Road. So, and I, and I get that that'd be a long-term sort of down the road with that in mind. But I'm just saying if we're talking immediate implementation, that would be one that I would say is, is, is more practicable than trying to redo River Road right now after we just redid River Road, so.
Thank you. Mike?
I have a question based off of that. So, you know, we keep talking about the redevelopment along River Road. It's not going to happen tomorrow or maybe even 10 years. What is the horizon for the street part and multi-use path part of River Road?
Yes, so there's, there's a reason that's not in text at tonight's public hearing. Because we recognize that there are more conversations that have to be had. I mean, clearly, ultimately, the idea would be that that would come back because there need to be updates to the TSP and the capital improvement projects list and prioritizing those things that get done with the public funds versus the private investments. So, I mean, again, the plan, the idea is that the plan would kind of set the framework to utilize that. Then it would be, it would be kind of a separate step or process. I will say this, like, we kind of, we kind of took a big swing on this revitalization plan. A lot of times with a plan that's this large, an entity like ours would maybe come to you and just say, hey, consider adopting the plan. That's it. Like the text amendments, all of that other stuff would come with later meetings and later efforts. But we felt like since, and I'm going to blame Nate since he's not here. But we felt like since there's been so much work for so long on it, we kind of wanted to go ahead and say, no, our planning commission can handle it. They're, they've been invested in the project. So we kind of tried to put as much out there for your consideration tonight. We know it's a lot, it's a big ask. We recognize that. But yeah, so that, those, those specific. But yeah, so that, those, those specific transportation design elements, like, I'm not showing brand-new text for all of that tonight. So that would be a kind of later, a next step, if you will.
Good, thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Yeah. So ideally, whether it's tonight or whether it's after a continuation of this hearing, we're forwarding a recommendation to the council to adopt this plan as our goal. From there, the council will continue to get updates, continue to get check-ins. Here's the priority list, here's potential funding partners, engaging more small business, engaging the chamber, all the partners who would come in to do this. But part of our recommendation, and this is where I'm asking for clarification, I do have a question in here. Part of our recommendation is going to be to adopt the coding changes, the changes to setbacks, the changes to vegetation, to parking changes. And I just want to make sure that if we are forwarding this to the council, that is something we would be go-on. That's not something that would be, "Hey, we like this, and then we'll continue to think about it for another two years," correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just a, an additional comment, as we go through this process over the next few years, it's the, it's the first thing that popped out to me when I was reading through the plan, which I generally really like, by the way. It's a tremendous amount of work, so thank you, thank you to staff. Thank you for all the people in the public who were part of these conversations and came to the, came to the displays and provided comments. But the, the thing that stood out to me, and it stood out to me again when Mike came up here, is marked crosswalks. If we have a greenway, which I love, you know, for example, if we say we have a mixed-use path on the east side, and we have a greenway on the west side, I'm going to need a way for people of all bike levels, of all, of all skill levels, to safely cross where it's convenient for them to cross, not going, you know, 10, 12 blocks down the road to cross, then come 10, 12 blocks back to the, to the location they wanted to be at. So however we want to formalize that, however we want to look at that, crosswalks are a requirement to me, and I know they're a requirement to everyone. I'm not going to assume that I'm just the genius that thought of that. But having it written down, and having it formalized in a, in a recommendation and discussion of what would be the most practical way for Kaiser to go about that, seems to be the, the most obvious critical piece that's missing to me in this plan. Which, again, is great. And you did a lot of work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. Mark?
Thanks for those comments, Jeff, because I was thinking along the same line. I, I have to tell you, I have done for 40 years battles with traffic engineers over crosswalks, who believe that crosswalks are not a safety thing, that they actually give pedestrians a feeling, an unrealistic feeling of safety. I, as a, some of you may know me, some of you don't, but as a police officer at City of Salem for 29 years, one of my assignments for a long time was I investigated fatal traffic accidents. I investigated a lot of pedestrian accidents. We've had several pedestrian accidents on South River Road here. I have advocated for some kind of marked crosswalks, or some kind of device, something for South River Road. And I got the same feeling as you did, Jeff, when I was reading this, is that we are missing an opportunity here. I realize these things, I've been told they're cost up to $250,000 for one of these mid-walk, mid-block crossing things. 20 to 50, I'm not in the business, I don't know. But I don't think we go far enough in our traffic part of this particular document as far as pedestrian safety is concerned. Again, I realize that as a driver, when I'm driving South River Road, that there's 11 intersections, and every one of those is undermarked crosswalk, and I see people crossing all the time, and they get halfway across, and they're stuck in the middle because nobody will stop. I realize that initially, our responsibility is engineering, and then it's education, then it's enforcement. So if we're not going to have enforcement protecting our pedestrians, then we better start relying on engineering, which means we need to put more effort into what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Michael?
In addition to saying, "You're here," I wanted, I said this previously. I know that we have this corridor plan, and we're very focused on the corridor. But I want to make sure, for council and for staff, that we look at this as not just in a vacuum. So when we make decisions citywide, that we think about how that's either negatively or positively impacting the goals and direction that we want to see for River Road and Cherry. I could, you know, point out many things, but certainly, just whenever there's a plan for a street improvement, or, or a business opportunity, we look at things and how it's going to affect this corridor, because there's only so many businesses who want to set up shop in Kaiser. And so let's make sure that if we want to get more commercial activity on River Road and Cherry, that we, we don't undercut that by supporting it maybe somewhere else.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Do we forward, yes? Mark?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, you need to close the public hearing.
We'll close.
Public hearing is closed, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Mark, please.
I recommend, I move that the Kaiser Planning Commission forward to the City Council, Kaiser City Council, to adopt the current Kaiser revocation, revitalization plan and associated map and text amendments, and to implement the plan.
I second that motion.
Vote? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Who wants to?
No, because we didn't have any discussion. I mean, we weren't to the, right to the vote, so.
Okay.
Oh, you're right.
But, I mean, it passes, so.
Well, do we want to do the discussion?
Do we want to do the discussion?
Parliamentary procedure, you do what you want, manager.
Something to say, say it.
Well, I.
I think we got a lot of our discussion out just now, and if you felt discluded from that, I'm uncomfortable voting until you feel like you've had a chance to, to speak.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll change my vote to aye.
Okay, so I believe that is a motion to approve, to move forward, to City Council. Do we need to gabble? Nope. No. Yes, Mark?
I have one more thing. And, and Jeff got me all fired up. So with that, what is our process in pursuing some kind of emphasis to the City Council to look at pedestrian safety and traffic safety as part of this commission? Is it, it's totally outside our purview, and this goes to the traffic folks? And that's where I should go to make my statements, or? I'm looking to staff.
I'll jump in, she is pausing. We can certainly carry that forward. I was thinking, right as you were speaking, Mark, of the traffic safety pedestrian bikeways committee, because I feel, in fairness to them, they would probably want to weigh in. So I probably, with the allowance of the commission, will raise this issue with the city manager and figure out what the next steps are, because I certainly took Kopeius' notes on a pretty clear and passionate direction of the, appeared in majority of the commission anyway, with regard to this issue. So unless the folks up here have some other, other ideas, I don't see it directly affecting this plan, which is more, I think you're looking at hard, concrete infrastructure issues. And we will certainly carry that forward, and we'll figure out what the right process for that is. If that works, your votes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Want to make a comment to that. So before sitting on planning, I was the council liaison on the Traffic Bikeways Pedestrian Safety Committee. There's a mouthful. And so several times we have had comments about traffic lights. I happen to know exactly where the one is on South Commercial. I drive by it every morning. But we have talked about River Road, we've also talked about Lockhaven, right by McNary, because parents are stopping on Lockhaven to let their youth out, and they're crossing the street either in front of the car or behind a car to come to McNary. There are some regulations, and Bill Boyer can speak to it more than I can, about how many feet distance has to be between a school crossing and these crossings. And I think there's other discussion on River Road that Traffic Bikeways has wrestled with over the last couple of years, but I would encourage it to come back there. I know it's been cost of, of the crosswalk, whether it's just the flashing lights, or if it's the middle piece, or however we construct that. I know cost always seems to be a concern, which you can't put price on lives, I understand that. So I would like, at some point, to have some true costs of what those crosswalks are, because I have heard, I mean, we heard 25, $50,000. I was told the one there on, on Commercial there was actually $150,000, because someone I work with received an email from the City of Salem, and that's the cost of that particular crosswalk with the cement blocks in the middle. So you have a little kind of island to get partway across if you couldn't make it all the way across. So I think, you know, from a, from a, from my perspective of sitting on council, you know, it's, it's always a money thing, because we are a city with not a lot of excess funds, but I think that's something that we need to look at and find true costs, and then look to see potentially where those funds can come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mark?
I have a question and a comment. A question is, with the traffic, or transportation system plan, is that right? Is that something that this body reviews, or how does that work? Or update?
This body would review the TSP. The only question I have is the degree, though, of detail. Typically, the TSP isn't going to be talking about that kind of thing. I would be thinking individual crosswalk improvements, so much as we're, you know, dealing with where the bike lanes go and where the traffic lanes go. But I'm not sure that the TSP would deal with that, but I can check into that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think the one thing, and I, I would need to look at it, the actual words, but I think what you would find in a TSP would be general goals and policies that would support those types of implemented safety features. Because it really is more about your collective roadway system to accommodate future growth, and there's transportation modeling that goes on, lots of traffic engineers that write it, essentially. So, but yeah, we can, we can look at some of that. There may be some broad-brush policies on our TSP right now. I will say that, I mean, for what it's worth, we did hear mid-block crossings as being a concern. A couple of the open houses, the River Road Renaissance Plan from 2001 actually identified a couple of concepts for that. This was, this plan, it was a little bit outside the scope of really looking at that level. It was more geared towards the bike and the zoning and those kinds of things. But yeah, I don't think, and I think Shannon said it, but the adoption of the plan would not preclude City Council from saying, "Hey, we're going to put in a mid-block crossing here." Like, they would not be in conflict with this plan in order to do that in any way, so.
My comment was just that the Traffic Safety Bike and Ped Committee has recommendation authority, if you will. I think this body has a little more behind the recommendations than the other committees. So I don't know if this can be sort of the extra hammer for some things that the TSBP Committee would recommend, but that was just a comment.
Thank you. Any other? Yes?
So overall, I think it was a good hearing. And since we're done, the only comment I'd have is, I know we did the Measure 56 notice, which was by law required. And I did email the planning staff today. I think one of the things that we didn't take advantage of in terms of our public notification process is using social media. Until today, there was nothing on social media about this, or Nextdoor, or any of the other sort of digital platforms I think that, that people have come to rely on for information. And so I think moving forward, especially as it goes to council, I cannot strongly recommend enough that we make sure to get this out there as much as possible. I recognize that we did make a legal minimum requirements for notification, but in the planning world, you never get in trouble for over-notification. So just a, just a comment there, it's a great resource. It was shared around 4 o'clock this afternoon, and within like 10 minutes, it was shared a half a dozen times or better. And so I would just really like to see better utilization of the resources we have, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I'm going to back that up for you, Matt. I would agree that there, there seems to be, I, I think there are ways that we could communicate the needs that Kaiser has and the work that is being done to address them. In particular, when I was looking over the public comments that have been received over the course of this project for the last year and a half, many of the comments showed that people felt there was no real need for worrying about additional, additional residential zoning changes, additional housing, when in fact, we're in the middle of a multi-year housing needs analysis that says, "No, in fact, we've got 10,000 people coming here in the next 20 years, and we need 4,000 residences for them." So the, the fact that there can be that much confidence in, in there being an issue that needs to be addressed, and there can be that disconnect with the, the citizens who are going to be affected by it, and who are going to find out, "Well, this is the first time hearing of it," sort of, sort of issue. Yes, we communicate, but if we can just take that extra little, if, you know, 1% more effort results in 25, 30% more people being aware of an issue, I think it would lead to a lot more meetings that have this sort of turnout and this sort of engagement, which even if it's someone voicing their dissatisfaction, that's engagement, and that's critical knowledge for us to have.
Thank you. Any other comments? Great. Okay. Old and new business? So old, new business, staff report?
Yes, we'll keep it, keep it brief since it's late. Just a couple of things. Story pool got completed, if you haven't seen it, that happened. We are having a meeting, speaking of the housing needs analysis and build the lands inventory. Staff will be meeting with DLCD, City of Salem, Marion, and Polk County Representatives here next week to discuss some of those findings that came out of that committee, and what that, what those implications might be for our region. So stay tuned. It may be that you get to jump from one big project to another big project.
Hopefully.
Real, real soon, for you guys to consider some stuff. And then lastly, Nate wanted me to kind of give you guys an update. We're working on getting the intergovernmental agreement signed, and whatever they do, ratified, agreed to, with, with ODOT for the impacts of growth on the transportation system project, which is essentially some funding through SCAS program. Mike knows about that. But so, looking at our infrastructure needs, and how growth, and what those costs are going to be associated with that. So that's very close to being done. So we wanted to let that, let you know that. And then last but not least, I probably should have started the meeting with this. Nate was very apologetic that he was not able to be here tonight. He had a big family reunion, and I think in Idaho, or some other state where some of his kids live. So he was gone this week, and wanted me to offer his apologies, and looks forward to seeing y'all next month. So, that is it.
Thank you. Council liaison report?
Let's see, last week was National Night Out on Tuesday, and I'm proud to say the city had 46 different National Night Out events throughout the city. Each council member attended three events this year, a little different than in years past. So we actually spent more time with each of the neighborhoods we visited, and so I actually like that, instead of spending about five or 10 minutes at a neighborhood and then having to leave. So, so we had three, I thought it was great. Monday night, the 19th, is a regular council meeting, starting at 7:00 P.M. Most everyone knows the neighborhood associations have not been meeting in the summer, but they will all resume in September. So West Kaiser meets on the second Thursday. Gubser meets on the third Thursday? Third Thursday. Southeast Kaiser meets on the first Thursday. I was looking at Colleen to make sure I had that right. And so those are open to everyone, you don't have to live in those specific areas. We love, West Kaiser loves to have. We love, West Kaiser loves to have everyone, as I know Gubser and Southeast Kaiser, so please plan on attending those meetings, and also visit the website for any other information about the city and any volunteer openings that we may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Last topic we have, it sounds like council representative, and it sounds like we have a volunteer of Matt to give the update on Monday.
Well, it should be Gary, somebody needs to volunteer for that, because Gary wasn't here.
I'll do it, but I'll be there for Parks anyways.
Oh, yeah, just let Gary go ahead and do that, but.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Any other final thoughts before we adjourn? Yes?
One of our, is this one of our commissioners' last meetings? Is this your last meeting?
It is my last, yeah.
It's your last?
Yeah, I've termed out, so.
Well, no, actually, you have one more. Yes, not until the end of September. Your term goes, your term goes till the end of September.
Nice try, Commissioner.
Now I got to cancel that vacation.
Get that housing needs analysis meeting going. Let's get it.
Okay.
Don't let me miss out.
Next year, next week, or once you can find me to.
Wonderful. Adgeren, thank you, everyone, for joining today.
Thank you.
Thank you.